Well, hello friends and welcome to the July 12th edition of Weekly Witness, Texas Impact's weekly opportunity for mainstream Texans of faith to learn about public policy issues here in the great state of Texas and have a conversation about how you can engage in the process. My name is Scott Adnip, your host and Texas Impact's engagement director. And today's episode is brought to you by Methodist Healthcare Ministries of South Texas and Friendship West Baptist Church in Dallas. And today we are excited to welcome to the program our executive director, B. Morehead, who's going to give us an update on where we stand on day five of the 30-day called session of the Texas Legislature. We're also excited to premiere a new video with highlights of the marathon hearings on the voting bills from both the House and Senate this weekend. But before we get into the program, we want to remind you that a week from right now, if you are with us live, we are going to be concluding our Let My People Vote rally for voting rights at the Texas Capitol. We talked last week about the challenge for Texans of faith to mobilize on voting rights. We've seen you do this before in special sessions and we're going to need you to do it again this year. We need you preaching, we need you teaching, we need you writing op-eds, we need you communicating with your representatives, we need you active on social media, but more than anything, we need as many people as possible to show up at the Capitol on July 19th at 11 o'clock to rally for voting rights. For those who register at TexasImpact.org, we'll have a pre-rally program on Sunday evening, including an amazing panel that B. can talk more about. We'll have training that morning and we'll have legislative visits after the rally. So go to TexasImpact.org right now, register, learn more, see the schedule, do all of those things. We do currently, as of noon on Monday, have 25 co-sponsors to this event. If you're interested in adding the name of your congregation or if you have other questions, you can reach out to me at Scott@TexasImpact.org. Now, with that said, I'll be honest, I was talking before we came on air this morning, I was a little groggy for church on Sunday morning because we pulled an all-nighter watching the hearings on Saturday night, Sunday morning. So I feel like I, in particular, need a word this morning. And so we are grateful and excited to have longtime Texas Impact board member and executive committee and member and hero, Reverend Randy's Weekly Word. Randy, thank you so much for joining us. The floor is now yours.
Thank you, Scott. When Scott, I told Scott that this was a reflection, not a sermon. Sermons are 15 minutes, reflections are five. But when Scott called me and asked me to do this and he said, would you do the Weekly Word? And I asked him the normal questions, how long, you know, is it recorded or is it live and so forth? When we got through with that, a strange thing happened. A word popped into my mind and the word was insucience. Now, I'm an English literature major and I've never used the word insucience in anything I've ever written or spoken of. I think it's left over from my English literature background, probably comes from Jane Austen. It sounds like something Jane Austen would have said. And so I thought, well, maybe I better check this out. Why did this word show up in my, in my head? And so I went to the dictionary just to make sure that I was clear about what insucience meant. And lo and behold, it turns out that insucience means a careless disregard. And it has to do with indifference, a careless indifference. I thought, well, you know, maybe that's something we need to think about this particular session. It's about the careless disregard that we have. And as people of faith, I think we always have to remember that what we say and how we say something matters. It really matters. Words matter. And when we speak to others, are we writing to others, are we texting to others? I think that one of the things we need to understand about that is that we shouldn't forget that what we're saying or writing or texting matters how we say it. Words can heal, but they can also wound deeply. They can give validation and value, or they can demean and demonize. Words can undergird and can build the beloved community, or they can undermine and destroy the beloved community. So none of us should be insucient, carelessly indifferent about what we're saying and what we're reporting and how we do that. We should say what is true and we should write legislation the same way. We should not be carelessly indifferent about the kind of legislation that is written. How our words spoken or written give testimony of the core, the core of who we are. I'm reminded of a biblical phrase that says, "Good trees bear good fruit and bad trees bear bad fruit." And so it is with our words. We can do good with what we say and what we do in terms of our representation to those persons who are charged with carrying out legislative work. And I think that that's what we need to be sure that we say to them is to say, you know, you can't just be carelessly indifferent about the way you're talking to one another in the legislature, about what you're saying about one another and others who may be representing their point of view. We need to understand that our words matter and that we should prayerfully, prayerfully consider what we say, what we write, what we text. So that's my word for today.
Randy, I really appreciate you taking the time today and also thank you for the incredible work you've done for this organization and the ministry you've done over the years. So thanks for all of that packaged together.
Thanks.
Excuse me. And now we'll welcome to the conversation B. Morehead, who now has the homework assignment of trying to figure out how to work in the word insucience into the conversation that we're going to have over the next little bit together.
It's not going to be a challenge. Thank you, Randy. That was actually just exactly what we needed. That's the stuff.
Oh, excuse me. Last week on this program, I felt like I had a cough and no voice and today that was the first one. So let's see if we can make it through with that. So B., it was, it was a long, long weekend. Let's try to catch people up to speed. So the short story is the Texas House convened at 8:00 on Saturday morning. The Senate came in at about 11:00 and spent all day Saturday and into Sunday morning having conversations about the bail bill, first on the House side, but both chambers considered the voting bills. And I just want to start from, from a public policymaking standpoint. On the House side, they started at 8:00 in the morning. There were hundreds of people who traveled to Austin, including many of our listeners who signed up to provide public testimony. And I think the public testimony started at about 1:00 in the morning and went until 7:00, 7:30 Sunday morning before they voted down a couple of amendments and voted the voting bill out early Sunday morning. Is that the ideal way to do public policy in the state of Texas?
Um, no, no, Scott, no, Scott. That's not the ideal way to do public policy. But I mean, for, I think it's worth taking a second to unpack why it's not. One reason is because it's not, uh, I mean, it's just, let's just start with no one's thinking their best, no one's doing their best work on that kind of schedule, right? I mean legislators are not able to hear as effectively, the witnesses are not able to testify as effectively. People aren't able to think of appropriate questions and there's not the appropriate contextualizing environment for that testimony. So thing number one is it's just not a good, it's not a good way for people to work. Thing number two is it's not a good environment to make changes based on what you hear, right? So what we heard in the House was, uh, at the, at the conclusion of that hearing, the chair said, you know, I just want to thank the members and the witnesses who all stuck with us for so long and listened so thoughtfully. He said, listen so thoughtfully to the robust discussion that we've had. And after that robust discussion and after all the things and the number of times that the author of the bill said, oh, representative, I want to work with you on that bill. Stakeholder, I hear you and we want to address your concern. That chamber voted, that's, that committee voted that bill out unamended on straight party line with no break. They didn't even have a chance to like go to the restroom and think about it for a minute, right? They didn't have time to take it. Nobody said, let's take a 60-second pause and everyone can pray or meditate or whatever it is you need to do to get ready to take this vote. No, they just did it, right? So that, so, and similarly on the Senate side, there, there was not, so, so what that does is it demonstrates to all those witnesses that it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what you say. It doesn't matter that you came and spent all day. That's not true. I don't want to say that we think that that's true. But what it makes the witness think is I came and said all that stuff and you said you heard me and you said, thanks for coming and it didn't matter. There was no consideration. Nobody said, well, even though we have this problem or anything like that. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. I've got the same allergies everybody else has, I guess. Um, so, so that's a concern. It is, they're, the kind of the salt in the wound, I think, on, in that regard, in the regard of, of what it does to public participation in the future and morale, is that on the Senate side, and I will say, I think probably more people were watching the House eventually than the Senate. But on the Senate side, there was a kind of a shocking situation, I mean, among several shocking situations. But, but one was the chair of a large county party organization testified in support of the bill for a long time. I mean, had longer than most people get to testify. Sat down and then was called back up because one of the members on the dais had not gotten to hear what he had to say in the first place because he'd had to be out of the room. Well, people testify all the time to an almost empty room. I mean, they're, they testify in the middle of the night to nothing but empty chairs. And we say to them, don't we, Scott? We say, it's okay. That is okay. One, it's on the video and people will be able to see it. But two, that is part of the process and you can be sure that even though you're not, that everyone's not there to listen to your particular testimony, you are part of the process. It is not very often, I don't remember off the top of my head, ever having someone say, well, that one person is so special that they got called back up because somebody didn't get to hear what they said. And then, and then during the, I think, 25 additional minutes that that party chair was doing their testimony, the chairman on the committee said, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Legislator, Senator Boris Miles from Houston has a busload of his constituents who have been here all day. So they rode the bus from Houston and have been here all day and their bus is leaving.
This was at like 9:00 PM, right? Like this was, this was late, right?
No, this was, uh, at that time, there was time for them to testify.
Right.
And he had said, you know, like once before, he had said, now we need to remember there's this busload of people and their legislator wants to make sure that they get to testify, so we're going to prioritize them. So, so in the middle of this testimony, he said, we're going to prioritize them. So members, if you can, you know, kind of cut it short with this guy who's already having a second time at bat, so that those witnesses can testify. The members on the dais then proceeded to continue to ask that witness questions. That witness who didn't have any intention of leaving. And eventually the committee chair said, well, I'm so sorry, but it's now time for their bus to go. We've, we've made, we have actually gotten to the point that only time for one person from that group of 45 to testify. So they've had to choose one of their number to be sort of the spokesman for their whole group. What do you think it does to the public's perception of the policy process when that's the way they're doing business? So no, not a good way to make public policy, Scott.
Yeah, and I usually don't like to start with a question that allows us to kind of tee off on process type things, but no, I did it because I heard many of our legislative engagement group members and, and then people who listen to Weekly Witness on a regular basis, I heard their name get called at like 4:00 in the morning.
Yep, yep.
And I just felt bad, right? Because we asked people to show up and here they were 20 hours into a hearing after traveling from Dallas or wherever they were coming from and didn't get a chance to have their voice heard. And so I just wanted a chance to say thank you to all those who were able to make it. We'll post, we'll post some, some clips of those who were, I think Josh testified in one committee at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and the other one at 6:00 or 6:30 or something in the morning and we'll have those clips up. But just thanks to all who, who did make it and I appreciate your willingness to travel and try to do that.
Geez, no kidding.
So, um, so on, onto the substance. There were many people who were able to ask thoughtful questions and then have significant testimony. Any quick observations of, of the substance of those conversations before we play, before we premiere a very exciting video with some highlights?
Um, I mean, I think I would, I would, a couple of observations. One, most of the people who testified in opposition to the bill, and I mean, when I say most of the people who testified, honestly, you and I watched pretty much the whole thing in both chambers. And I went back yesterday, I watched it all kind of twice since I worked on the video yesterday. Most of the people who testified in opposition testified that they do want elections to be secure. Of course, they don't want voter fraud, but they have genuine concerns about disenfranchising people and, and causing problems for local communities. And there were people who talked about just the range of kind of kooky things that can happen to local people in a local place and, and so there's not, it's not a, doesn't have to be a polarizing issue. Nobody supports voter fraud, as far as I can tell from that testimony. It is up to us, the faith communities and the local communities in Texas to maintain that boundary, that this doesn't have to be a partisan issue. It doesn't have to be a polarizing issue. And if it's being treated as one, it, you know, shame on us if we fall for it, I guess. It's, this is not, doesn't have to be partisan. Um, the other thing I'd say is, uh, I sure wish people would really watch what their legislators say during hearings. Because it is, it would be a much richer conversation than many people could have if they could say to the legislator, I saw you say that thing on the video. Help me understand what you meant. With that, we have an opportunity to watch a little bitty bit of video out of the, I guess collectively, it's 48 hours worth of video that we, um, but we have six minutes that we'd like people to watch right now. I know six minutes is a long video in the era of TikTok, but hopefully people can stick with us. So you want me to go ahead and show it now?
I do, and I'll also direct people to our YouTube channel where I assume this is.
Yeah, actually I can do a little bit better than that. Here is, uh, here is the YouTube link to this video. And also before, uh, before I play it, I want to put one other thing in the chat. It is this quote that has been just a touchstone and reflection for me, although insucience is, is going to be right up there with it now. But I think, Scott, that you'll be super excited at who said this. "Voting is a matter of faith, citizenship, and democracy. It is a kind of prayer and faithful testament to the belief that every citizen bears a responsibility and equal right to determine the future of governance in society." And of course, the, the person who said that was not a philosopher from the first century. It was actually our own Susan Henry Crowe from the General Board of Church and Society of the United Methodist Church. And I think we need to carve that on the Capitol with the other timeless things people have said because it really, really goes to the heart of it. So with that, I will go ahead and play our video, which I guess will be, it is worth saying, it'll be interesting for people on the podcast as well because it's mostly effectively audio. So here we go.
I've come before you as a Texan that would like to say that we all share much in common. And I'm very concerned about where we are going in our state. And for the inability to use a lesser term, I must say that it is clear that the legislation before you that you're now considering SB 1 is anti-black and anti-brown.
Has it been a disparate impact study done to determine the impact it has on minority voters? On the face of it, it could be race neutral. The question becomes whether or not, in the application of it, whether it has a disparate impact on minorities.
Well, Senator, I don't know of any study. I know throughout the process, as objections have been raised based on the impact to different communities, there's been a debate and many times provisions have been removed or have been amended to address those concerns. There will be some matters that people just disagree over.
Some of the things in the bill in reference to disabled the community are really pretty shocking and disappointing that they would actually be included in a piece of legislation.
People with disabilities require a little additional support. And for me, that might look like being able to use a stamp or an electronic signature to verify my identity. In my second election that I voted in, I voted by mail. I submitted my signature, which unfortunately is never exactly the same. And I'm out in San Francisco, I got a letter letting me know that my ballot was discounted because of my signature.
I think that what's occurring here with poll watchers is really disappointing because the poll watchers are empowered to such an extent, they become overseers like on a plantation and they're sent out more to watch and see what the slaves are doing on the plantation.
Well, let me give you some information.
Yes, ma'am.
I had a poll watcher come and stand behind me. And normally in an African-American area and Hispanic areas, when they send poll watchers to our areas, they always send people that look like the Proud Boys into our communities. And they walk behind you and look just like they've been to kick your rear end if you just move out of place and it make you nervous. They make some people nervous. And this, this particular lady came and she stood behind me. And I politely turned around and asked her, what did she want? And she looked at me and I looked at her and I stood my ground because I didn't think that she needed to come and stand behind me while I cast my vote. Number one, I could read. I didn't have any need for assistance by anyone and I definitely didn't need her to come stand near me. And what she was trying to do, or probably had been doing, I'm assuming from her conduct with me, that she had been intimidating those African-American persons and those Hispanic-American persons coming into that precinct trying to cast their vote out of mere presence of her nationality, her ethnicity, Anglo, looking mean, you know?
In my district, House District 105, which is Irving and Grand Prairie, we had voter intimidation too, kind of like what Dean Thompson talked about. Except hers happened inside the polling place. In my race, it happened out in the parking lot. We actually had operatives of the opposing candidate who was running people's license plates and then telling them, I know where you live.
You said there's a trade-off between having those eyes and ears and those poll watchers. And I applaud you for training people and giving them a quiz and making sure they know the law. But here's the problem with this legislation that I find. It's there's also a trade-off with disenfranchising people like that young lady that was in the wheelchair or other people who are blind or other people who may have find the difficulty. Do we pay a price by passing laws that may disenfranchise those who may find it as easy as you and I to go vote?
I appreciate all the members and our witnesses' attention to the important testimony that we've heard today. As stated at the beginning of the hearing, we're in a special session and we're operating, as you all know, on a very compressed timeline. It is my intent to take a vote on reporting House Bill 3 at this time. The chair moves that House Bill 3 be reported favorably to the full house with the recommendation that do pass and be printed and sent to the general calendar. Clerk will call the roll.
Chairman Ashby?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson? Busey? Flardy?
Aye.
Garin?
Yeah.
Jaton? Johnson?
No.
Click? Langraff?
Aye.
Lozano? Longoria? Moody? Niave? Nay? Shaheen?
Aye.
White?
Yes.
Members, there being nine ayes and five nays, the motion prevails.
So we're not going to go through the, the whole Schoolhouse Rocks reminder of legislative process now, but there's still a long way to go before any of this becomes law, right?
There's a lot of steps to go through.
Right. And so what do listeners do next?
So I think this, here's what I'd say. There's a lot of steps. There's probably not a lot of time. We would have expected a bill like this in a regular session. It would have been weeks or months between the bill being introduced so that people could start reading it and testifying on it and the day that the committee actually would have passed it out. And they would have spent time, it would have sat in committee and there would have been amendments to it. Well, none of that happened. This bill was introduced less than a week ago and it's already passed out of the committee and then sent to the calendars committee. And I mean, spoiler, it's going to get set on the House calendar and maybe this week, likely this week, actually. And, and further, it is likely When this week is over, probably there will be bills in both chambers, having passed both chambers. And the next thing that happens is a conference committee. The conference committee process is usually, I would say, from, from where I said it, it feels like it's usually pretty insular. But in this case, we can't afford to let it go. I mean, what you want to do is figure out who those conference committee members are and be, you know, directing guidance to them. But be sure you're telling your House members, if the bill comes out of the conference committee with anything, I mean, where we should be right now, after these two bills pass out of committee, is the House, it, where the state should end up is not a compromise between these two bills. If, if the, you know, we've got the Senate setting one right bar and then the House setting the next bar, what we want is something that is more close to the middle than either of those issues. More of a co, of a compromise than either bill. But so you would start with the House as the, what somebody might call the, the right fence post, right? Like, this is the first gatepost. If what we end up with something, i, i, is something that is not more responsive to public concern than the House bill currently is, then, uh, that bill really needs to not pass. And the House needs to say, "We, we did our best and we weren't able to get a bill that we can pass." And that's just, that's just the winner of it.
And so for, for folks who are on our rapid response team, uh, we'll be sending out an email, uh, soon with some, some, some talking points. Uh, but, uh, any kind of overview of, of if people are making telephone calls this afternoon, what the ask is?
The asks are, one, primarily, be serious about being responsive to the genuine concerns that were raised by constituencies that clearly have even, that are not partisan constituencies, right? So the disability community has serious concerns about this bill. The seniors, people who sit in our pews, often have serious concerns about their ability to vote under the provisions of the bill. People who are longtime volunteers in their local communities who serve as election judges, things like that, should have serious concerns. So what I would say is, we have, we have several, um, several points that we think are, uh, are where the amendment strategy needs to focus. One is to provide accountability and transparency for poll watchers. They need to have training. They need to have, uh, there needs to be, uh, some way for judges to have more authority not to get into a long dispute with them. They need to not be able to intimidate the way that you've heard Representative Thompson in the video describing what they do. Um, and there's a genuine question about why poll watchers would have more rights in this process than voters. So that needs to be somehow, uh, aligned. For election judges, there need to not be civil penalties threatened. They need to, they're, they need to, uh, be protected from the idea that any little mistake that they made, an honest mistake, could open them up to a catastrophic financial situation for their household. Um, they, on the mail-in ballots, there need to be, uh, there needs to be clarification that multiple forms of identification number are, are able to be used. Um, and providing real opportunity for people to cure their mail-in ballot. So one of the things we've heard was, um, and not, we didn't include it in this video, but we have a clip on Ledge TV, on our YouTube channel, of, um, another person saying, it, you know, "If I'm homebound, whether from disability, or age, or inability to drive, or whatever, and I need a, a mail-in ballot, I probably can't, if I'm homebound to send the mail-in ballot, probably likewise homebound not to be able to go somewhere in person to cure it." So there's gotta be a way to cure the mail-in ballot that's responsive to whatever the limitation was that made the person be able to cast it in the first place. So protecting the rights of vulnerable voters, putting some kind of, um, justification mechanism in that doesn't put poll watchers in a superior position to the other players in the process. And making sure that local election officials are, continue to have the authority that they're supposed to have to run their elections and, uh, make the decisions that are, are the right ones for their community. Um, and those would include things like if, if, uh, if you're not allowed to offer, um, early voting or drive-through voting in a certain kind of structure, and the one that you were going to use burned down, you know, you need to have the flexibility to, to switch to a different one, for example.
So, uh, I will note that it is 12:40 on Monday, so everything, everything that we are, no, I'm not fussing at you about time. I'm just saying, everything that we are saying at the current moment is, um, you know, as we know it, as of 12:40, uh, the legislature moves at a, or especially in a special session, moves at a lightning fast pace. And so, um, inevitably, we'll record this and there'll be some breaking news, uh, you know, while we're here, and we will be responding real time. Uh, so, that said, we want people making telephone calls to the representative and senator now about the importance of protecting voting rights. And we want people registering to show up at the rally, because regardless of what happens in the, over the course of the next week, we're going to be talking about voting rights on the steps of the Capitol at 11 o'clock on Monday.
That is absolutely right. And I want to say something quick about that. The, the event that we're doing on Monday and the pre-event on Sunday evening, um, are not a rally to oppose Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 3 of the first-called session of the 87th Legislature. They are a rally to celebrate and support voting rights. And that means no matter what the legislature has done by this time next week, we're still called to show up to, uh, to affirm that voting rights are important to the faith community, among other reasons for these excellent reasons that Susan Henry Crowe has articulated so, so poetically. We also know that no matter what happens in this special session or any future ones, there's gonna be an election, there's three, like, three statewide elections coming up in the next 16 months. We have a constitutional election coming up in November. We have a primary in the spring around statewide elected officials, and also every member of the House of Representatives. And we have a general election in the fall for those same offices. Whatever impediments get put in place by, through special sessions, whatever benefits accrue as a result of legislation that may come up, the, the regular session, um, past being able to track a mail-in ballot, Texas Impact worked real hard on that bill. We're real pleased about it. That means now, if you're someone who has people in your congregation who are voting by mail, you need to be sure to tell them, here's how you do it. And if there's somebody who's not real good with the internet, you might need to help them track it. So, so it doesn't matter. It's not just bad things, good things too. We need to be prepared to help administer the elections. Look, the elections are about all of us. They're not a spectator sport. We all need to own participation in the elections in our local communities. And there's, uh, there's a, um, what am I gonna say? A tendency on the part of local congregations to hear the word "election" and assume that you mean partisan politics, you know, fighting between potential candidates who both really, really, really want to be the next, whatever the office is. But the candidates, in some ways, are sort of, uh, the decorations on the cake of the whole election process and the democratic process. The election process is ongoing in our communities 365 days a year. Our congregations and their members are volunteering. They are helping with often thankless and behind-the-scenes tasks. They are spending, you know, hours and hours and hours to make sure that, you know, in a county where you're getting just a few people doing the, um, you know, casting their ballots over the course of the day in some fellowship hall, and the, the poll workers, and you've seen them, they're crocheting or whatever it is that they're doing while they're waiting for the next voter to come in. Those are all members of our community who are working together to ensure that we all are having elections all the time. So we need to be thinking about our role in that foundation of democracy, not just in terms of how we respond when there's an immediate threat. I would maybe, uh, liken it to the way you do your home maintenance, right? You don't wait until all the systems are seeming scary and maybe like something could go wrong. Hopefully, you are maintaining month after month, year after year, so that, so that we always can feel confident in this, this amazing democracy that we all get to share.
So, um, we're, we've talked a lot this week and last week about, uh, voting rights, and we'll continue to do that over the course of the next few weeks and, you know, probably the next decade. Um, but there are other issues that are on the call for the special session. And as Beeman reminded us last week, uh, the governor is the only person who can add agenda items to the, the called session. And so I just want to quickly go through the other things that, that could be happening. And I'll just remind folks, Texas Impact has a consensus legislative agenda. We have positions on some of these, and some of them, uh, we won't, we won't touch. But just so you understand kind of the breadth and scope of everything that could be considered, uh, I'm going to go through it and be, if you have a word or two to offer on any of them, I'll, I'll give you the chance for that. But first on the list was, uh, was, is bail reform. Um, I know you just talked about that in another call we were on, but anything to add about bail reform?
I mean, just, I would just say bail reform, uh, people need to be aware that bail reform doesn't mean the same thing to all people. Uh, many of our congregations have been interested in bail reform, um, from the standpoint of making it, uh, more accessible for people who don't have, you know, a lot of disposable resources to, uh, to not have to sit in jail for not being able to pay bail, not being able to post bail. Uh, the bail reform that's being considered in this legislative session would actually increase the burden of bail. Um, so, I just want to make sure people are aware that you shouldn't assume bail reform, "Well, that's something I like."
Right. Uh, so, speaking of things that could be things that we like or more likely not, we've already talked about election integrity, um, or voting rights. Um, next one on the list is border security, which I think Josh said in one of our recent Weekly Witness podcasts, that this is one that, like, we really didn't spend a lot of time talking about during the session, but like, five minutes after the session ended, uh, it came back to the forefront. Um, so anything you'd want to offer on border security?
Um, I would say we will have, we'll unpack that more in a future Weekly Witness. There's a lot to say about that. Um, in general, the state of Texas, uh, doesn't have any business building a wall between Texas and a colleague, foreign country, but, um, also that probably won't really happen.
Right. Uh, next on the list is one that, that got a lot of media, uh, coverage during the session, but, uh, the governor would define it as social media censorship. So, uh, making sure that, that social medias, media users couldn't be censored by a social media company, uh, for political viewpoints. Um, anything to add on that one?
Um, no.
All right. Uh, read your local newspaper. There'll be more cover on those. Um, Article 10 funding, uh, which is something, my guess is, we'll hear something about, um, over the course of the next few days. Uh, but the, the governor defunding the legislative branch, which I know is also in court, but, um, something we've certainly never seen before, but this would be the opportunity to restore the funding for the legislature.
Um, yeah, I mean, we're, we'll, I imagine we will see that resolved. I don't think that there's, uh, um, a likelihood that Texas is gonna, uh, become a, uh, two, two branch of government state. I think you'll see that the legislature will, will maintain its position as the third branch.
Yay, democracy. Um, so, the next one on here, I think, is, uh, my understanding is pretty small and tailored, that there was a bill during the legislative session, Senate Bill 1109, um, that required schools to provide appropriate education to middle and high school students about dating violence, domestic violence, and child abuse. And that, that was vetoed because it didn't have an opportunity for parents to opt their, their kids out. Uh, so it seems like that's one that...
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, that's one that we, I mean, we didn't work on it. It's certainly one, though, that a lot of our members would work on and care about. And, um, we, we'd, we'd be sad if it was vetoed and, and, uh, glad to see it come back up.
So, uh, the next one is one that we did work on during the session, uh, during the regular session, which was Senate Bill 29. And this is the one that had to do with, um, youth sports and, and competing, um, on the basis of the student's, um, sex at birth. So, uh, one of these anti-trans bills, uh, that, that our members cared a lot about during the regular session. And I believe there's a hearing going on right now, um, or there was scheduled to be a hearing going on right now about that bill. Anything to add?
Uh, we still oppose it.
Uh, and, and encourage your telephone calls.
Um, yeah, let me just say, I was gonna wait till you get to the end, but, but sure, all this other stuff is happening. I mean, this is, this is part of the, the dynamic, um, which I've described probably as dysfunctional in the Capitol right now. Um, any one of the bills that you've mentioned could be something that would take really a lot of work. Um, but they're all sort of lumped in there together. And the voting, the election-related bills are kind of the, the punchline of, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the big thing. All the rest of it is, I mean, it's tough to say it's a distraction, right? If you are the parent of a trans kid, or if you are the parent of a kid who you believe should be getting dating violence prevention intervention-
So, uh, the next one is one that we did work on during the session, uh, during the regular session, which was, uh, Senate Bill 29, and this is the one that had to do with, um, youth sports and, and competing, um, on the basis of the student's, um, sex at birth. So, uh, one of these anti-trans bills, uh, that, that our members cared a lot about during the regular session, and I believe there's a hearing going on right now, um, or there was scheduled to be a hearing going on right now about that bill. Anything to add?
Uh, we still oppose it.
Uh, and, and encourage your telephone calls, um...
Um, yeah, let me just say, I was gonna wait till you got to the end, but, but sure, all this other stuff is happening, I mean, this is, this is part of the, the dynamic, um, which I've described probably as dysfunctional in the Capitol right now. Um, any one of the bills that you've mentioned could be something that would take really a lot of work, um, but they're all sort of lumped in there together, and the voting, the election-related bills are kind of the, the punchline of, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the big thing. All the rest of it is, I mean, it's tough to say it's a distraction, right? If you are the parent of a trans kid, or if you are the parent of a kid who you believe should be getting dating violence prevention, intervention in school, or if you, uh, are a staffer who is wanting to make sure that they're still gonna have health insurance, uh, if the legislature really gets defunded on September 1st, any of those things, is really, um, I try really hard to stay away from saying any of those things are distractions. They're, they're not, uh, they are all of them top of mind for somebody, and that's really important for people to remember, too. Every issue that the legislature takes up, special session, regular session, it's top of mind for somebody, it really matters to somebody. In this case, it's, it's more just, um, just offensive to put all those really significant policy issues together and that have nothing to do with each other, except that they all seem to draw different kinds of constituencies into, uh, repeated conflict with no mediating influen, I mean, the mediating influence probably would be the 13th check for the teacher retirement system, which you're about to come to, well, you know, but hopefully, not a lot of people want to stiff retired teachers, right? That, hopefully, that's a pretty, uh, universally popular issue. But, um, but I do hope that everyone would keep their eye on this ball, that voting is the foundation for all the issues. It doesn't, it, it, there are, uh, there are so many issues, there are so, however many bills Josh said, we, the legislature considered in this session, voting is what allows us to have a discussion about any other issue.
Right. Um, I will just add on, on the anti-trans bills, we did have Jessica Shortall on two or three weeks ago on Weekly Witness and, and talked about, uh, the work during the legislative session. I think a lot of that language, um, will fit into this little, little piece. And I'll, I'll just say that, it's kind of haunting, um, it stuck with me a couple days, her conversation about the role, um, the importance of the role of the faith community, specifically on, um, anti-LGBT stuff, since it's so often, um, the media narrative is that, that the faith community is pushing for those, those things. And so, go listen to that conversation, uh, but that's one that will be important. Um, you've mentioned the 13th check, do you want to say another word about that?
Yeah, I just, just, uh, I mean, that's probably the one substantive.
Um, uh, next on, on the governor's list, um, uh, language related to, uh, abortion-inducing drugs, uh, and mail delivery, uh, probably not something we'll, we'll say a lot about, um, but, uh, is on the list. Uh, one that, that, uh, I think surprised me, I don't know if it surprised all of us, that it became such a hot topic during the course of the session, was, uh, critical race theory, uh, which has certainly blown up since those original debates on the House floor. But...
Um, yeah, I, I mean, we should probably devote an episode of Weekly Witness to talking about, um, the actual topic that is being described in shorthand as critical race theory. And I keep kind of straining for, I mean, I guess it's sort of similar to talking about, uh, transportation safety and shorthanding it as, uh, the, you know, some kind of Newton's Laws of Physics. I mean, it's, critical race theory is an academic term, it's generally sort of an academic discipline at the higher ed level. What the, what the legislation is talking about is constraining the ability of public schoolteachers in the state to teach, um, history and social studies, and, and on the margins there, that would include government. So, I, I mean, I think the, it'd be good if we could not use the term "critical race theory" when what we mean is censorship in the public schools.
Yeah, and that debate was unlike anything I've ever seen. Um, go back and, I'll, once again, say, go check out, uh, the Ledge TV, uh, video feeds from the session, because that was, that was something.
It was surprising, it was surprising.
Yeah. Uh, so, closing out, the last one that's currently on there, and I know there are rumors of other things being added to the call, but the last thing currently on there relates to appropriations, um, for property tax relief, uh, foster care, and, um, cybersecurity.
Yeah, and what, what I, I would say that, we would say about those is, uh, we just had a session. With, there's no conceivable reason that we should be adding appropriations issues like that to the call of a special session. Um, that was, that's just stuff that the legislature's supposed to do during the regular session. I want to say something else. People who are listening to this in an hour or in a day, and probably people who are listening to it right now, are gonna, gonna know that there is media coverage of all the possible, um, heroic measures that Texas Democrats are gonna take to avoid passing voter suppression legislation, um, including busting a quorum and, and I don't know what all, but we should, I mean, legislators do what they do, and there, there are parts of the process that are really sort of their, their business. It's kind of the stuff that they do in, in their house. It is a private fight. The public fight is how we would have gotten here in the first place. And what, what voters should be doing is, is probably not, um, not consuming the entertainment value of this special session and the ongoing, um, conflict over voting rights and all that. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be entertainment to consume on your devices. It's like a symptom of an illness that you see in your child, where you say, "I, I think we need to, I think we need to really dig in here, there's something really wrong." If we're having, um, I mean, I guess just to, to kind of wind up that metaphor, when a kid's having a really funny tantrum, which they do from time to time, kids have tantrums and you just think this is hilarious that they'd be behaving this way, but you want to stop and say, "What's make, what's making this happen? This isn't right, or this is not, this isn't the relationship we all want with each other? This is not the relationship we all want with each other." If any community is well-positioned to, to recalibrate the, the kind of relationships that we have going on in the public square, it should be the faith communities. So, um, I think, I think it's, uh, you know, our shift has started and it's time to, it's time to work.
Right. Uh, anything else you'd have before we close it out?
Uh, just, um, just how grateful I am to get the chance to talk and, um, uh, look forward to doing it again.
All right, friends, uh, we will do it again, not on Zoom, but in person. Uh, next Monday, we will be gathering, and, and Bee just said it, now I'll say it again, uh, y'all, this isn't the time for, like, social media warriors. This is, this is the time for the faith community to, to stand up and speak out and show up. And so, uh, we hope to see you in Austin, uh, Sunday and Monday, July 18th and 19th. We especially want, um, as many people as possible showing up on the steps of the Capitol, uh, at 11 o'clock next Monday. Uh, invite your friends, invite your congregations, um, we need people, uh, to show up, uh, to make the drive and show up. We recognize that not everybody, um, can make it for work reasons or whatever, so if you're not able to make it to Austin, uh, we hope that you'll show up to the district office of your representatives. Um, go see them in person and, and let them know, uh, that you, as a person of faith, uh, prioritize democracy, um, and support voting rights. Um, next week is the week. And so, uh, plan on being there. You can find more information at TexasImpact.org. You can add your names to the list or ask any other questions by emailing me at Scott@TexasImpact.org. Uh, in addition to showing up for the rally, um, make sure that you and your congregations are signed on, um, that, that you're talking about it. Uh, use the liturgical guide, have the conversations in your local faith community. Uh, you can always join our rapid response team and our legislative engagement groups by going to TexasImpact.org, clicking the Action Center, um, and sign up to receive , uh, those updates and/or be connected with people in your district to do this work together in an accountable way. Um, and as always, on any of that, feel free to reach out to me, Scott@TexasImpact.org. And remember, if you appreciate Texas Impact and the Weekly Witness community, make sure that you and your congregation are members by going to TexasImpact.org/join. Uh, friends, we are on day five, if you're listening live, of the 30-day, um, called session of the Texas Legislature, so this is gonna be a sprint, uh, so we need everybody showing up and being engaged, but it's also, uh, going to be, uh, a long game. So we're gonna be working on these issues for a long time, but regardless of whether you're, you're thinking about the short term or the long term, we need you active and engaged, uh, so let us know what we can do to support your work. Uh, now's the time, so let's get to work.